I'd like to call to order the Hatfield Township Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for October 22nd. Roll call.
President Zipfel.
Here.
Vice President Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Andrus.
Here.
Commissioner LaStracco.
Here.
Commissioner Partha.
Here.
Chief Tierney, since you brought us a ray of sunshine to our day, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(laughing). A pledge of allegiance to the flag, and to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united as one, with due diligence.
All right, short agenda tonight, folks, but let's start with, is there a motion for approval of tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Vice President Rogers, second by Commissioner Partha. All in favor of approving the agenda? Before you say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing on that is approved. Citizens comments? Any citizens comments on agenda items? No? Okay. Consent items? Is there a motion to move into the record, the consent items that are listed on your agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion by Commissioner Andrus, second by Commissioner LaStracco. Those consent items include the Board of Commissioners' meeting minutes of September 24 and October 8, the treasurer's report for the month of October, and the bills payable, paid bills in the amount of $57,339.17, and unpaid bills in the amount of $2,345,349.98. With that, I will call the question. All in favor of moving those into the consent items, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing on those are approved. Okay. Quick.
Mr. President, just one item is off the agenda tonight, just so you know. The Wawa, we did not receive the documents that we needed to get into the maintenance period.
So we have a kind of a very special and surprise recognition tonight. And I'm going to go over to the podium as we begin, and I think we have some folks who are going to join us.
(laughing). I think it just hit.
Welcome, everyone. Come on in. The crowd just keeps getting bigger and bigger, which is fantastic.
Another retirement party for Hatfield.
Merely because you see all these people, you assume they're here for you? It's kind of a large assumption, don't you think?
I want to go by the presentation.
And no, it is not your last night.
I'm here for the presentation.
(laughing). I love the fact that we have a very long pause because an extraordinary amount of people need to come into this room for this extraordinary event. I don't think we've had this many people in this room for a Township Commissioners' meeting for, I don't know how many years. All right, I think we're near the end. I'll start to give away the surprise, Chief, if you haven't figured it out, we're here for you tonight. So this very special and surprise recognition tonight is in honor of your 40 years with our Police Department. So 40 years ago, a young Bill Tierney walked into the Hatfield Township Police Department, never realizing that he would be here for 40 years and ultimately become the chief. And I'm sure that if you asked young Bill Tierney if he ever thought he'd be standing here tonight, that many years later, in the position that he holds, I'm sure that he would say, "Impossible," and that he would flash the great big smile that he has. Well, we gathered family and friends tonight to congratulate him on this 40th anniversary, and I have to tell you, we are darn glad that you are still not only a part of our family, but the leader of our family, and we have something very special to share. (applause).
Resolution 13-24. It's a resolution to the Board of Commissioners of Hatfield Township approving the appointment of William J. Tierney as Chief of Police, whereas Police Chief Mark A. Toomey tendered his resignation as Chief of Police for Hatfield Township, and whereas the Hatfield Township Commissioners accepted that resignation and is in need of a replacement, and whereas William J. Tierney was hired on October 15, 1985, as a patrol officer and was promoted to the rank of corporal in 1992, to sergeant in 1998, and to lieutenant in 2007.
I'll hear you make it. Don't read it down your neck.
No, but it's tough to look at you when I read when you're standing all the way back there. Whereas William Tierney was promoted to Deputy Chief in 2011, and whereas the Board of Commissioners desires to promote Deputy Chief Tierney to the position of Police Chief, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners hereby promotes William J. Tierney to the position of Chief of Police effective September 3, 2013, subject to the execution of a mutually agreeable employment agreement, the execution of which is hereby authorized, duly presented and adopted by the Hatfield Township Board of Commissioners, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, in a public meeting on this 28th day of August 2013. And this is, I guess, just a little bit extra, our additional way of saying thank you and congratulations, which is your Chief of Police badge. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Message on a personal note to my sisters that are here tonight. Many people along the way have said I would never amount to much. I think I can put that to rest. (applause). (music playing). (singing) May God bless and keep you always. May your wishes all come true. May you always do for others and let others do for you. May you build a ladder to the stars, climb on every rung.
He's hiding in the same spot I called him out from the last one. Hold it, hold it right there. Oh, yeah. Brian, can you?
(laughing).
All right, so as a part of this milestone, which is incredible on so many different levels, obviously, I think everyone has figured out what we're doing. It's something that has never been done for a Hatfield employee, and it's an entire 283-year history. And that is, from this day forward, the street that runs along the police station, the new one that's almost completed, and leads to the nature center will forever be called Chief Tierney's Way. (applause). Chief, you built a legacy here that is just of excellence, and this is just a small token of our appreciation. And so, one of the beautiful things about this that is not lost on all the commissioners and everyone who put this together is that future generations will know the impact that you had on our town. Your family will be able to drive past that street and say, "That's Chief Tierney's Way. That's my dad, that's my relative." And your grandkids, Braden and Harper, will drive by and forever be able to say, "That's Diddy's Road."
Young Billy's on the way, too. (laughing). (inaudible).
That's fantastic. When's that happening?
Jamie, what are you doing? June? May?
May. So, you know, when you have an incredible person and an incredible milestone, it is important to celebrate those moments. Forty years in any position, but especially in this position, is incredible. So I just wanted to take a couple of extra moments to talk about him professionally and then also personally. So professionally, I was pleased to be able to, as you saw from the video, I was here when Chief was elevated to being the chief, and I remember him stepping into the position with great ease. I'm sure at times you probably didn't feel maybe everything was at ease, but I have to tell you, as one of the commissioners who was here at the time, we often felt that it was a seamless transition, and we had tremendous, and still have tremendous, confidence in all of his decision-making, which just made it so fantastic, not only for the Board of Commissioners, but for all of the residents in Hatfield. It is a testament to his success that everywhere I go and everywhere I speak about Hatfield, people are ready to say great things about Chief Tierney. So it's great that those who work with you and your family and friends have such great feelings for you, and even more so for the people who don't necessarily know you, but experience your excellence every day. They're the ones who say, "Oh, you got a great Chief of Police over there." And that just simply doesn't exist anywhere that I know. We do not live in a time where it is easy to be in public safety, and we've had our share of difficulties. It's not as though our town is immune from difficulties. But he has stewarded us with grace and thoughtfulness for these many years, and no, tonight is not your last night, you have hopefully many years ahead. On a personal level, I want Chief to do something, it's advice that I've given to people at various events when they're being honored or recognized. I'm going to ask you to do yourself and us a favor. I want you to take a moment and look out in the room, and take your time and realize, these people are here because they love and respect you, and we want you to remember this moment for the rest of your life. We love you for the impact that you've had in our lives. You are our leader, and most often, you are our leader when we are at our worst, when we need someone to be a rock, and you have been our rock. And I'll leave you with a quote that has stayed with me for years. Alfred Lloyd Tennyson, in his famous poem, "The Idols of the King," best described a leader, a true leader, which is what you are, when he said, "The fire of God fills him. I've never saw his like before, and there lives no greater leader." On behalf of the entire Hatfield Township and our Hatfield Township team here, thank you for 40 years. We really love you, and we appreciate everything you've ever done for us, Chief. (applause). Sure. I believe we have a representative from Congressman Fitzpatrick's office here who would like to say a few words.
Thank you for having me. My name's Seth McLean, as said, from Congressman Fitzpatrick's office. We're here today to honor the Chief, and I just have some, I have remarks prepared, or a proclamation prepared, from Congressman Fitzpatrick in recognition of his incredible career of service to our community. I'll read an excerpt from tonight. Whereas Congressman Brian Fitzpatrick, as the duly-elected representative of Pennsylvania's first congressional district, is pleased to honor and pay tribute to Hatfield Township Police Department Chief of Police Bill Tierney for 40 years of service, for his outstanding 40 years of dedicated service, visionary leadership, and enduring contributions to the safety and well-being of the Hatfield community, recorded this day, Wednesday, October 22nd, 2025. (inaudible) of your service to our community.
That's fantastic.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Yeah. Got a lot of stuff to hold, as usual.
(inaudible). Thanks.
One of our best communities, the Indian Community from BAPS, temple right down the block, they have a number of representatives here, fantastic community and family-oriented, and I know that Punam Amin would like to come and say a couple of brief remarks.
Thank you so much. I'm here representing our BAPS community, right here, as Tom mentioned. Chief Tierney has been to many of our events, to a point where he would come for any health care event, he has come for the Valley Events, he has interacted with kids, getting them excited to be part of the police force. As you know, the kids absolutely love someone in uniform, and with his smile, he has made it possible for every kid who runs up to him wanting a hug from a police officer, you don't find that often in our community. So we are forever grateful for not only the Chief's leadership, for us as a community to feel safe in our neighborhoods, especially in these times. We have always relied on Chief, emailed him, he has always been responsive, and we are forever grateful for his leadership and his team. So thank you.
I caught the quick eye of Commissioner Scott Brown, and I believe that he would like to come up and say a word or two.
Well, this is certainly emotional. I have not experienced this for a while. Lucky for me, lucky for me, I caught Solicitor Ian Uzi in the parking lot, and he says, "Remember, Scott, before you speak, you can still be arrested driving through Hatfield Township even though you've moved out." So I sort of, on the fly, buffed my remarks up a little bit, so I would not run the risk of having my red car stuffed as I drove through. So one of the benefits, the lasting benefits of my time as Commissioner here in Hatfield Township, was meeting and working with folks of tremendous high quality. And after being not on the board for 10 years, that's what brings me back tonight, because I've worked with folks of high quality. And Chief, you're on that list. You're certainly on that list. So congratulations are certainly in order. I have experienced you as a person of integrity, of honor, a person that puts deeds before action. I'll say that again. My total experience is this man was not a show horse, he was a workhorse, and I think that's why we're having this tonight. So thanks for leading the department. That Sandy and I, every night we went to bed, felt safe, and that was important to us. Congratulations and best wishes.
So, as President Commissioner Zipfel just said, my favorite thing. And first off, I had no freaking clue. Nothing. I saw Kristen and her mom thinking, "What are they doing here?" Saw my kids, my family, people, and like, but it didn't hit me. So Aaron, Kristen, whoever put this together, unbelievable, but thank you. I haven't gotten any better at public speaking, I can assure you, assure you that much, but as I look around the room and, as Tom had said, I go to each face and I think of an ingredient from everybody, what they put into me. The first eyes I see are Chief Toomey. And I remember him saying to me, "What do you think about this chief-ing thing? You think he'd be interested? You think he could do that?" And by this point, of course, when I started in 1985, I felt I could be chief already. I certainly learned through the years that that was not the case, that much more went into it. And, you know, and then I see Lieutenant Schmitz, I see colleagues, I see my family. Everybody has put something into me, and I'm certainly, you know, have my imperfections. But I have loved every second of this job, I'm not done yet. I've loved the people that I have met. We strive to be as good as we could possibly be here in Hatfield, and that all has to do with the ingredients of all the people that have come into my life, and that's all of you here. The fact that you would even come out, and again, I'm still rattled a bit, which doesn't normally happen to me. But we have such a good community, we have good leaders, we have good people who put me into this position. You know, I want to come up with some more superlatives, and I can't find them right now, but I've been a lucky man. I've been a very lucky man to be here and be in this place, be in this position, have the responsibilities that I have, and to work with these great people that I work with. I'm the luckiest man alive, I truly mean that. Money or whatever doesn't mean anything. All of these things out here are the things that mean something, so thank you very much. I'm not sure what I'm going to say when I retire now, so.
(laughing). (noise). (inaudible). 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 (noise).
Great.
Thank you.
I love it.
Yeah. How about you?
Hi.
I'm glad you pulled all this thing off.
Yeah.
Great job.
And you saw the meeting, did you?
Yeah. Everybody would be gone by then.
Boy, chief. Chief, we got all the chiefs. Good, how you doing? Good to see you too. Thanks for coming out. Appreciate it. Where's his video? Yeah, where's his video? Appreciate it. Well, I'm lucky to have you. How far in drop are you?
Oh my God. Have a problem.
Oh heckle.
Oh, steal their sneakers. It's not good for people that get diabetes. Man told me that.
They're all heading out. Look what I found. I was there for a dollar. My daughter's in her house. I walked past that. Thought you knew Larry. Like I hate you. And then you just tell a gift to me. It's like, Larry, you give it to me.
Oh, okay. Thank you for coming.
Guys?
The workers. You wanna do that? Okay. Plenty of time to go in here tonight. Alright. I got the ribbon cutting.
Hey, Tom. Second. He said to you that they make Commissioner's Way. The street. No, he said he told you that. She is. Oh, okay. He had no idea. He said it wasn't just technical.
I'm sure you can see them and ask me.
Sit down. We're coming together. No, not yet. It's small enough. We're gonna wear a saddle. I don't wanna see a sit here. Getting another.
Absolutely, that'd be great. Yeah, have a good excursion. Sure. Airbird. Oh, cool.
Hey, Chief. Chief. We're questioning your detective skills right now. You know that, right? You couldn't sniff this out?
There was nothing to detect.
Maybe this. Mr. Brown? It's still work to do.
Work to do, I'm sure.
It's a very heavy lifting tonight. You wanna make a comment about some more agenda? Speed bumps? You wanna talk speed bumps?
Speed bumps.
Walnut Street?
Walnut Street, oh my gosh. How straight it is now. Pick up here.
It's looking better. It's looking better.
I will. I will, tell everybody to have. Your board, come over and help.
No, no.
Alright. We're getting very big. We're getting really big. Thank you.
So one week to work, two days to go.
We gotta get together at our house.
Yeah. We had technicians. So now we put in new software since we're...
Missed the party, shall we?
And I knew we had some people that were sharp. Some people like this. You have, um, all these things. I can't get any.
If you need advice, come ask. I'll do what you're gonna do. Good purchase. Alright, we got some work to do.
Gonna superimpose him into it.
Fuck, I seen the street sign or this or that. Did you hear about her? I could hear about her.
But my daughter said...
That was the only one we got out here. You see, when I moved from one video to the next, it showed that all my videos had him right there. It was almost the end.
Okay, Tom, where you at?
Terrible.
Chief, are these yours?
Those are mine. Those are not mine. Those are yours, these are mine. Oh, I'm in the way?
Uh-uh.
She finally got to me. That was the last one. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, okay.
That's not true. See you, Pat.
Forty years is up, Chief. See you at fifty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's got nothing on you, Bob.
Nah.
This party's gonna be good.
Alright, settle in for a very long meeting, folks. We have one action item.
He's wondering what just happened tonight.
Yeah, exactly. We have one action item. And that is Resolution 25-17. Is there a motion for approval with regard to the North Penn Imports amended approval? Motion by Commissioner Andrews, second by, I think, Vice President Rogers. Aaron, do you want...
I think we should make Chief summarize this one.
Absolutely.
After that. Brian, you wanna take this one?
Yeah, we had discussed this at the workshop. This is for the North Penn Imports land development project that got approval a couple of months back. As I mentioned at the workshop, I missed in the provisional approval resolution that there was a waiver that staff had agreed to, but it didn't get included in the resolution. And that was specifically for two parking rows that do not have an island in between, you know, separate out for the required distances. It's in the area where they're gonna be storing cars, not a big deal. They have all the requisite plantings on the site anyway, so we're not really losing anything. That's what the purpose of the resolution, just to make sure that everything is accounted for. So, well keeping, really, when you get down to it.
Some housekeeping, or a housekeeping item. So, alright. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor of Resolution 25-17, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. Solus's report.
I just wanna say to Chief, God bless you, man. Thank you for all your years of service. Half Field Township in this world is a better place because of you.
Well said. Very well said.
Thank you.
Aaron said that's the best report I ever had.
That was John's only report.
It is. Alright, citizens' comments. Any citizens' comments? Hearing none, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Vice President Rogers, second by Commissioner Andrews. All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that is approved. Have a nice evening. Thanks for coming out, folks.